I was prepared because I knew you wouldn't be ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rich. Excellent. Ms. Jessica, I skipped the roll call.
You did.
I think we're holding off on that a little bit in the hopes that we can get Tiana with us.
That's fine.
In the meantime, go ahead and when she joins, we'll add her.
Got it. So I've got Commissioner Reagan and Commissioner Ames. Commissioner Benino.
Here.
And do we have Commissioner Mayer?
She's not for this.
Okay. So no Tiana, no Meredith. Got it.
And the rumor is that Tiana might be joining us soon. So first of all, thank you, everyone, for a unique situation that we're in. And appreciate everyone's flexibility and good humor and hard work to make this meeting happen virtually like this. Kristin, do we need, I presume if people are watching the meeting, they're already watching the meeting. Do we need to give directions for anyone that might be listening and not know where to find us? Seems like if they're watching, they already know where to find us. And if.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay. So we hope everyone that is interested in these. Yep. So first item on our agenda is, well, roll call, we've done that. Salute to the flag. Election of officers. It's kind of unusual that we get this far into the year and haven't had that already. But the unless someone wants to move that we postpone this for another month. The floor is open for nominations for chairman of the Eureka Planning Commission for the year 2020.
Okay, I want to make a comment here. This is Rich Ames. We've been in this situation for the last two meetings. And the situation is there are only three people at the meeting. And we always say we don't think three people is a good amount to make chairman. So I think unless someone shows up, we do this later on in the meeting. Or if they don't show up, I say we postpone it again.
I agree, Rich.
I think Tiana just showed up. I see her name on a tile on the bottom. Hopefully, we can get her picture and her voice pretty soon. Can you hear me, Tiana?
I have no audio showing for her. Yeah, she has audio.
Oh, my goodness.
Hello, Tiana. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, so sorry. We were having some technical internet difficulties on this side of town. I apologize. So.
I can't imagine that's the case, but we trust you anyway. Great to have you. Thanks. Thanks for joining us. So we've had a roll call. So let the record show, Tiana Ariaga is with us. We've had the salute to the flag. We are now on item C, election of officers. Rich was just saying that in the past, three has been deemed not enough to proceed with this. You are the fourth. So.
Yay.
It's still conceivable that someone could move to postpone this to the next month. In that case, you'd be stuck with me for the remainder of this meeting. Or if someone wants to nominate someone for the office of chair of the Eureka Planning Commission for the year 2020, now's a great time to do that.
I dominate Jeff Reagan.
Okay. Any other nominations for chair?
I second Jeff Reagan.
Very good. Tiana, do you have any nominations for chair?
Um, no, I don't.
Why do we have Ripley, somebody up here? Towinski?
Riley, he works for the city.
Huh?
Riley Topolowski.
Right, right.
He's on there twice, Joe. He's on there twice, once for his voice and the other for his screen share. He's got some presentations coming up. So one will be his computer screen, the other will be his voice. In the meantime, I am Jeff Reagan. And I would be honored to serve as your chairman again for 2020. There are no other nominations. So are there any objections to me serving this chair for 2020?
No, no objection here.
I would, I would just like to comment because there are no other nominations. I think there's a good chance, Jeff, that you might get it again. And the only way that that would happen, because no one else is up. But so I, I agree with the second and the nomination.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Very good, Ms. Jessica. That sounded unanimous to me. All right, we need, thank you. I'm honored again. Thank you very much. Vice Chair, are there any nominations for vice chair for the planning commission for 2020?
I have one.
Yes, Rich.
You want, no, did you want to go, Joe?
No, go ahead.
Joe and I both have been a vice chair. And I think that we should make history here and have a woman as a vice chair. So I nominate Tiana to be the vice chairman.
All right.
I'll second that.
Tiana, are you willing to accept that nomination?
You will be the first ever in the history, Tiana.
I see what you guys are doing. Um, yes, I accept. I will be your vice chair. Thank you, gentlemen.
I presume that means you have no nominations yourself, Tiana.
No.
I don't either. So with that, with that motion, no other alternatives? Everyone that agrees that Tiana should be our vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any opposition? Anybody opposed?
Under the conditions.
The ayes have it.
Oh, wait a second. There was conditions. Can't put conditions on after.
I changed my mind.
Actually, correct the record there, Rich. Don't want to forget about Marge Custis. He was vice chair a long time ago.
Oh, yes. How could we forget about Marge Custis?
And chair for over a decade.
You're right. Okay, Tiana, you're not the first.
I, for one, am grateful. I'm too young to remember that. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. I presume everyone's had a chance to review those. And so the chair will entertain a motion to approve them.
I wasn't there, so I can't not, I can't motion.
I will move that we accept the minutes as read, as written. Tiana, Rich, one of y'all had to be there.
Were you, Tiana?
Sorry, can you guys hear me again? I'm having some technical difficulties, as I said earlier.
You're fine.
Okay, great. Uh, yes, I mean, I approve of the minutes.
All right, that's the second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye.
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 I wasn't there, so I'll just abstain.
Okay, so we have three ayes and abstain, so the minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is oral communication. So this is a chance for any of the participants that have, would like to share some thoughts with planning commission that aren't on the agenda to share those thoughts. Do we have anyone, Kristin, that you know of?
We do not.
So is it safe to close oral communications?
I would say yes.
I will check that off our agenda. All right, next item on our agenda, our public hearings. We have no continued public hearings. But we do have three new ones. The first one, 535 Fifth Street, a cannabis retail conditional use permit. And Riley Topolowski, it looks like you are the staff person in charge of that, correct?
That's correct.
Would you give us a staff report?
Will do. Here we go. Good evening and thanks, commissioners. My name's Riley Topolowski. I'm just pointing that out because it was so obviously hacked up there earlier by Commissioner Ames. So good to see everybody. We're here to talk about, our first one tonight is 535 Fifth Street. It's a cannabis retail conditional use permit. And the applicant is Brian Robinson. So here we are up in the north central part of town. Over at the, what is that, the northwest corner of Fifth and G Street? And here's the building as you look north. Here is the same building looking west. And one more view looking at it northwest. So the project description, 535 Fifth Street is an existing 10,664 square foot gross building area. It proposes, the project proposes an 811 square foot dispensary. And it also proposes two consumption lounges, about 2,700 square foot for the first one and around 715 square foot for the second one. The applicant is proposing a cannabis retail facility which requires a conditional use permit. Commercial cannabis licenses are being processed separately. Quick summary of the findings, the project is located in the downtown zone district. Where cannabis retail is listed as a conditionally permitted use. The downtown zone district is consistent with the underlying downtown commercial land use designation. And the proposed use is consistent with general plan. Continuing on, summary of findings, the project location is in accord with the objectives of the downtown zone district as documented in the staff report. And the project location and the conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity as documented in the staff report. One more summary continued here. The use permits are discretionary actions subject to environmental review in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. However, the project qualifies for a class one exemption. Because it's a conversion or minor alteration of an existing structure. And the project will comply with the applicable provisions of the code. We do have some recommended conditions of approval. They're pretty standard, as you guys have probably seen before, but we're calling for no cannabis plant materials to be visible from the exterior of the property. Prior to commencement, the applicant will obtain all required building and fire permits. If any licensed retail facility takes part in onsite consumption, the operators must comply with all requirements contained in the onsite cannabis consumption policy, which was attached as attachment to in our staff report. In the event that a building permit involves any ground disturbing activities, the city's standard protocol for incidental archaeological discovery will be followed. And with that, we have a staff recommendation, which is the adopt a resolution of the planning commission to approve with conditions a use permit allowing cannabis retail with offsite and/or onsite consumption of cannabis at 535 Fifth Street.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from the commission to staff?
Is this a one-story facility or two-story, or how does this work?
It's got a main floor with mezzanine and it's got a basement.
Okay. Right.
Any other questions for staff? All right, so we've moved to a public hearing. It's our custom to let the applicant speak first, and I think he looks to be in our meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, I'm here, Brian Robinson. Thank you.
Excellent. So we have a three-minute limit. Ms. Jessica Payne, you'll feel free to jump in and tell us when that three limit, three-minute limit is up. Brian, we'd love to hear your thoughts on your project here.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to, you know, apply for something that is somewhat new. We really hope that we can make this something that can bring in people outside of the area. Really, at some point, once we're done with all of the COVID stuff and start reopening, we can kind of showcase Eureka and show all of its, you know, wonder and have kind of a place where people want to come and visit as a staple. So we're willing to, you know, put some time and effort and fixing up the building. It does have, you know, street frontage right on 101, so we really are looking forward to, you know, spiffing it up and getting, you know, businesses back downtown. And if there are any questions, we currently have licensed cannabis farms and a bed and breakfast here in the county. We're local, raising two kids here with my wife, and we're really excited to be a part of Eureka and we're seeing the growth and things going on there. And, you know, being able to invest in the city has, it's really been exciting for us and we're really grateful. And if there's any questions, I'd love to answer them as well.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Any questions from the commission to Brian right now while he has the microphone?
I don't have any.
I do. Just your, this is Richard. Just the terminology you use relatively new. I'm familiar with, I'm very familiar with these projects, but I don't. New to me. What is, what do you thinks is different about what you're doing because you have an onsite consumption place?
Correct. Yes, having, having the onsite consumption in such a inviting area as something that used to be a nightclub, you know, is something that we're really looking forward to. You know, more of, more of the restaurant type setting. So that way, it's not just limited to, you know, a quick in and out. People can stay, enjoy themselves. We're hoping to incorporate a raw cannabis juice bar and working with the health department and ironing out those details. So that's going to require us working directly with our farm and being able to harvest direct leaves from our plants and be able to have that batch tested, frozen, and then be able to sell that in the store. And people will be able to juice that themselves and do some of the things that are different and you know, but some of these things are, of course, we're going to have to work with the other agencies in writing some of the procedures. That's going to make sense with all the California and local laws that we need to follow as well.
Well, there's one down on Fourth and F Street that has a consumption that we just approved last month.
It's not operational yet, though, Commissioner Ames.
Excuse me?
It's not operational yet. So we have issued some use permits, but no one has one that's actually open and operating yet in the city.
Okay, okay.
And, and I, and I think that's an, that's, and that's a great point, too, because one thing I think is going to bring people here is, you know, similar, like when my wife wants me to go shopping with her, she wants to go to a place where we can look at five different dress stores and check out all these places and not just be pigeonholed to have to go to one place. I think that having other places similar to this and forcing us to be on top of our game and push the limits is going to be the big deal as well. And, you know, having that in an area where people are going to be invited and want to partake in that, I think is going to be a huge part of it to the success of any business is to be able to have that healthy competition.
Excellent. Tiana, do you have any questions for Brian?
No, I don't. And I respect, you know, everything that's going on and Brian and to your family, you know. Thank you for believing in Eureka and pushing forward, you know, with your dreams and your plans. So it seems like an exciting project.
Any other questions for Brian before we let him go?
I don't have any questions. This is Daniel Hendricks, but I thought I'd comment that.
I'm sorry, Dan. Hang on just a minute. So we're, so Brian's done. So this is an opportunity for, you know, for citizens to communicate with the commission. So commission has no more questions of Brian. Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. And then Kristin, Dan, you wanted to say something. I'm going to go ahead and pick you next. But Kristin, if you could be thinking, what's the protocol for additional comments, that would be great. Dan Hen, you've got three minutes. Go.
Hey, this is, this is Daniel Hendricks. I'm a local and owner in a cannabis store in Greenville. I'm here with one of my business partners, Jeff Sherman, who also is a local. So graduated from Arcata High. He graduated from Eureka High. We know a lot of the people on this call and we just want to say that we really trust all your guys' wisdom. And I just wanted to add that Brian is an excellent contributor to the community. I have kids about Brian's age. We really enjoy Brian and he's definitely somebody that we feel really comfortable with and glad that he's joined the community. And that I do think his business is unique in its restaurant offering. And I think that they have an excellent business in their bed and breakfast, Brian and his wife. And that that kind of sophisticated tourism, I think, is a great addition to the community. And I think it's a great idea. And that's about all. So thank you.
Hey, Daniel, thanks for taking the time to come and share your thoughts. Appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Kristin, you would be the gatekeeper on that.
So we did receive one emailed comment on this item. And I believe that was forwarded to all of the commissioners prior to the meeting. And no other persons from the public indicated that they wishes, wish to speak on this item.
All right, so I'm going to, I've got that email in front of me, so just for transparency sake, this is Rick Gaub, I think, G-A-U-B-E. And I'll just read his comments into the minutes, just to make sure that he knows that he's been heard. He says, "To whom it may concern, I've lived in Eureka for 23 years and have owned a business in the 500 block of Fifth Street for 23 years as well. There were years that I was the sole business on the block. Can you imagine that? Kind of funny looking back, but I wouldn't ever have moved because it's a great spot. We can step out of our back door and watch the fireworks on the Fourth of July and watch beautiful sunsets nightly. Recently, several cannabis businesses have opened on the block, and I have no problem with that, but with the business concept, they frequent our establishment, and I'm sure some of my 40 employees frequent theirs. Some of the businesses on the street have been struggling over the years, and a few last even, and few last even a year. So I understand how the city would like to have one less boarded up business. All of that being said, I don't believe the 500 block of Eureka should be the Mecca of the cannabis industry." I think he means for our quaint seaside town. I love this town, and I think the main thoroughfares need to be developed smartly. Let's promote our little corner of the world to the thousands of first-time passersby that traverse the 101 every day. Do we really need three cannabis businesses in one city block? There has to be some kind of limit. Do we really want to model our town after Denver? I was in Denver for Christmas, and let me tell you, I saw 20 cannabis shops of some sort every 10 blocks. And some blocks were nothing but head shops. It's not a pretty look, believe me. There are hundreds of places off the main thoroughfares that I am sure they would be successful at. I hope you consider my concerns." So, Rick, we appreciate you taking the time to send that email. We appreciate your concerns. They're duly noted. And so Kristin, no one else is waiting to speak on this item?
Correct. Nobody else is waiting to speak.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, move the item back to the commission for a motion and discussion and a vote.
Jeff had a question for staff, or Riley, actually. My question was, Riley, I was down there, there was no sign in the window of this building, at least that I saw, that announced this hearing. Are there, is that going to affect the outcome of this hearing if, if there was no sign on the, on the wall?
That's interesting because I definitely put one up. It must have been removed at some point. But there was definitely a sign up and in place. So that's unfortunate to hear.
Yeah, and also the other two items we have coming up also didn't have signs. So I was just wondering, are you sure the signs got put up?
I know the next one did as well, but I don't know about the third one.
Okay.
So the fact that the sign is not still up or doesn't remain up for the 10 days of the the pre-notice period does not affect being able to act on an item or being able to hold the public hearing?
Okay. All right, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure everybody's clear, just in case somebody, you know, comes up with an appeal. You know, just to let you know that that was the situation. There's no signs on any of these three projects.
Appreciate your reason on that, Joe. Any other thoughts, comments, questions, motions?
Oh, but also everybody was noticed, though. All the owners within 300, 400, 500 feet, something like that.
300 feet, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Riley's got a proposed motion on the screen in front of us. Someone would like to do that, or if we have other questions, that's okay, too.
What are we waiting for? A, a, a motion?
A motion or a question or a thought?
Well, I just have a thought. Joe brought it, what? And Joe.
Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
Joe brought it up and Kristin answered it, but what's the difference between no sign on this window and no signs up around the water tower that we had to postpone it a month because there were no signs around the water tower?
The signage that was required for the public hearing on the water tower is actually for the public meeting that was supposed to be held for that. So it was a different type of sign that was required for that.
And we had no verification that that signage was ever up, if I remember correctly.
There was a question, yes.
Yeah. So Riley's telling us he is 100% certain that the signage was up for this hearing. So Kristin's affirmed that we are safe to proceed?
I will, I will move to adopt this, but I can't read the resolution because of the pictures on the right-hand side, it cuts off the verbiage.
Well, so glad you raised that question, Rich. If you hover over the top of the pictures, you'll see a little minus sign. And if you click that, it will hide all those pictures.
I think the public would get pretty upset if my picture was hid.
All right, Rich, I will, I will save you here. I move, Jeff Reagan moves, that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving with conditions a use permit, C dash 20 dash 0003, allowing cannabis retail with offsite and/or onsite consumption of cannabis at 535 Fifth Street, AP number 001143003. There's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Tiana, I'm going to give that one to Rich. I'm going to let Rich get his name in the minutes. Rich. Any discussion on this particular item? I would like to say to particularly to Mr. Rick Gaub. This is, as a planning commission, we function in three different manners. Sometimes we function as a legislative body where we approve and pass city ordinances. Sometimes we function as a judicial body when there is a dispute among residents or among residents, between residents and the city. And we act like a judge and we resolve those disputes. Other times, we function as an executive body. The law's already established. We are looking at the application to make sure it fits with the code, and then we either approve it or disprove it. So, Mr. Rick, I share your concerns. I fought tooth and nail against free-for-all marijuana development within the city. However, that's not the question for us. At this point, we as a commission simply do not have the legal authority to determine to determine what is good policy or bad. All we can do is determine whether this particular project fits the policy that has already been established. And I see no reason to, to vote it down. Any other discussion? All right, I think with that, looks like we're ready for a vote. All those commissioners, all those commissioners who are in favor of this project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I think that's four. Anybody opposed? Say nay. The ayes have it. It passes unanimously. All right, congratulations, Brian. Good luck. We wish you the best. And we will move on to our next item, which is the Martinez Residential Lodging Vacation Rental at 2427 G Street. Riley, it looks like you are the staff person in charge of that one as well. Can you give us a staff report?
I sure can. Thank you, commissioners, once again. Next up, like you spoke, we have Martinez Residential Lodging, AKA Vacation Rentals, multiple room. It's a minor use permit, and it's located at 2427 G Street. And 2427 G Street is somewhat in the center of town. It is on G Street, just south of Boone. And here is the residence at 2427, and looking east, front of the house. We move a little to the south, and we're looking somewhat northeast. We can see the driveway. And the project description is as follows. The applicant is seeking a minor use permit for residential lodging, multiple rooms, which is also what we used to call a vacation rental. The residential lodging will utilize an existing two-bedroom, single-family home. There will be a maximum of six occupants allowed. The RL will be available for rent year-round. And the proprietor will always be in residence. And House rules call for no noise or guests after 10:00 p.m. Continuing with the project description, there's a total of three off-street parking spaces that we can see there in the driveway. The operation, maintenance, and cleaning will be done by the applicant. And the applicant is the emergency contact and will always be on-site. So, a quick summary of the findings. The findings required by the Eureka Municipal Code to approve a multiple-room residential lodging minor use permit are discussed in the staff report, and the required findings can be made. There are some conditions of approval that we recommend. The first would be an inspection prior to operating. Next would be that the, the RL pays transient occupancy tax, and that the maximum number of occupants would be six. And with that, we have, we have a staff recommendation, which is to approve with conditions minus, or minor use permit 25/Residential Lodging 24, allowing a two-room residential lodging at 2427 G Street.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I was wondering how the, the proprietors are gonna be present all the time. Is this, is this a two-bedroom house or a three-bedroom house? I don't get it.
Yeah, the, the house has a detached unit in the back that's usually used as an office space. But the proprietor will be staying in the office space. It's a, the proprietor will be staying in the office space when the two rooms are rented out.
Oh, okay. I understand now.
Excellent. Any other questions for staff? I have a question, Riley. If this is, my understanding was that minor uses did not have to come before the Planning Commission. Am I incorrect?
No, you're, you're correct. After we did a couple of them, we discovered that there was usually some concern from neighbors. And that could have been just maybe the fact that we changed the name of them from, you know, BDUs to RLs. So there may have been a period of time when people were a little maybe confused and were afraid that possibly, you know, there was a hilt going in right next to them or something like that. So we decided to bring them before the Planning Commission rather than a director's hearing because the first couple we had kinda were, there was a little crowd forming, so.
Oh, well, for a little extra context on that, it's, it's also because of the COVID-19 event. We didn't want to end up with a director-level hearing that had, you know, 25 neighbors or something trying to get in. So, we felt it was appropriate to push this decision up, at least in this particular context. So, you may not see these in the future, but right now, when we're in this kind of weird operating pattern, this is how we've chosen to move that forward for these projects.
Excellent. I, for one, don't object at all. Riley, I hate to embarrass you publicly, but I have a gentle minor reprimand for you. The street named B-U-H-N-E is pronounced Booner by Euricans. So if you, you might have people think you're a foreigner if you say Boone.
Well, what would it be called if we were in France? It'd be, I think, Boonie?
Who cares? Who cares? Any other questions for staff on this item?
Yeah, Riley, the, now, the applicant, is that also the owner, or the, is this, are they, they're gonna be owner occupied?
Correct.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions from commissioners to staff? All right, so we'll open up a public hearing. So, do we have anyone, Kristen, that said they want to participate?
We do not, or did not.
We did not? We don't have any email? So apparently, the, the Planning Commission scared off that crowd of folks we were concerned about, Rob. They're so scary. All right, well, with that in mind, we'll close the public hearing. Now, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but this goes, if we approve it, it goes to the city council. And so anyone that does have any objections gets a second bite at that apple. They can go before the city council and object. Is that correct?
Uh, no, you're, oh, go ahead, Kristen.
All right, that's not correct, actually. Your action will be final if nobody appeals it within 10 days.
Okay, so everyone has a, they can appeal it to Planning Staff, Planning Department Staff within 10 days.
Correct.
So if anyone's listening, there's your chance. For now, no one's here to speak. We'll close the public hearing, return the item to the commission for a motion, discussion, and a vote.
Okay, Jeff, I move the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving with conditions a minor use permit, a two-unit residential lodging, parentheses, vacation rental, at 2426 G Street, Eureka.
So there's a motion. Does anyone else, would anyone else like to second that?
I'll second.
Could I pop in a quick correction? It was 2427 G Street.
Oh, sorry, 2427, right.
I thought that's what he said.
He said, "In any case."
In any case, it's clear, 2427 G Street. Okay, any discussion, commissioners, about this item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Hey, Rich, did you say aye or nay? I didn't hear your voice. Remember, you have to turn your mic on. It wouldn't be a Planning Commission if I didn't have to say that once, right? Hey, Rich, bottom left-hand corner, there's a little microphone button. If you click it, you'll unmute yourself. Can you unclick him for us, Kristen?
I cannot. It won't let me.
Uh-oh. All right, well, let the record show, we had three ayes and a no vote. That's still enough for the motion to pass. The motion passes, and we will move on to the next item, which is SD Management Use Permit and Coastal Development Permit for 4640 Broadway. We could begin with a staff report. Kristen, that looks like you drew the short stick on that one.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Rich. Okay, before we leave, did you vote yes or no on that last item?
Well, you should, you voted no for me. I heard it.
That is not what happened. Yes or no, Rich? Tell us quick.
Yes.
That's Jessica. That was four yeses. Passed unanimously. All right, Kristen, back to you. Staff report.
All right, let me get my screen going here. All right, so we have the SD Management Use Permit and Coastal Development Permit. The project information is showing on your screen there. It's located at 4640 Broadway. The zoning is general industrial, and the land designation is also general industrial. So here we are in Eureka. We are way down here at the southwest corner. Zooming in a little bit farther, we're located here. And then we have the wastewater treatment plant here. We have the former Kmart building here. And we have the Herrick Avenue overpass right here, and the parcel is right there. Zooming in one more time, just a little bit closer there for you, so you can see at least the aerial view of the building. Then if we are driving on Highway 101 going south, this would be the view from 101. And as we're passing it and looking west, this is what we would see. And if we exited off the Herrick Avenue off-ramp and came around onto Pound Road and looked back up north, this is what we would see. So, the existing building is approximately 13,300 square feet, and it does abut an environmentally sensitive habitat area or an ESHA. And the applicants are proposing to repair limited portions of the walls, floors, and roofing structural systems. They then propose to operate volatile and non-volatile cannabis manufacturing and a distribution facility. Volatile manufacturing is a conditionally permitted use, and before you tonight is the use permit for that use. Additionally, for projects within 50 feet of an environmentally sensitive habitat area, when they're doing repairs, as they are proposing, they need a coastal development permit as well as a coastal development permit for the use permit. So in order to approve the use permit and the CDP, the Planning Commission must find the proposed use is in accord with the provisions, objectives, and intent of both the Zone District and the zoning code, that the proposed use is not detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, and that the use is consistent with the local coastal program. The Planning Commission must also find that the repair and maintenance that is proposed for the structure is to less than 50% of the structure, and based on the analysis provided by the applicant. And discussed in the staff report, I believe the Planning Commission can approve the use permit and the CDP. And there is a recommended motion on the screen for you there, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Do we have any questions from the commission for staff on this item?
Uh, this is Rich Ames. It looked to me like there are more than one, one business there already. There's somebody cutting up stumps or something in the back. Is, are all those businesses going away, or is it gonna be multiple businesses?
I believe that there is only this business, this SD management business, that's proposed there. And I think that the stump cutting or the burl cutting was a previous business. I don't believe it's there anymore.
Just the stumps. Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
That's the old Rockin' Our Meat Company. Do you guys remember that?
Yep.
What it is, Joe does. It's old timers, get 'em.
Tiana and I are thankful that we're young enough to not remember that, yes. Kristen, I have a question.
Yeah.
I have two questions, actually. First of all, one presumes that if they repair less than 50% of the building this time, that three or four years from now, they will be able to prepare, to repair, less than 50% of the building at that time. And three or four years from then, they'll be able to repair another less than 50%, so that over a six, eight-year period, they could repair the entire building, correct?
I do not believe that that's correct. I think that the, the Coastal Act considers those as cumulative. So once they hit 50%, then it's a replacement of the building, and that would require a different type of coastal development permit.
So what is one to do when one lives in an old Victorian like me, or, you know, if a business, this building's been vacant and less than well-maintained for a while? What's one to do if it requires repairs that are greater than the threshold?
Again, you would have to apply for a coastal development permit if you were located in the coastal zone. The analysis that would be done for the coastal development permit is different. In this particular coastal development permit, you're not being asked to determine what kind of impacts the repairs would have on the ESHA. Whereas if they were repairing or restoring more than 50% of the building, there would be more in-depth analysis about any, any potential impacts to the ESHA. They, the applicants did provide a number of reports that talked to potential impacts to the ESHA, and there are conditions of approval to ensure that there are no impacts based on those reports, and those are attachments to your staff report.
Probably won't come as a surprise to anyone here that I think that's kind of a goofy idea. Maybe we should just not tell the coastal commission and turn them on to that. My other question, I noticed on a couple of maps that it looks like there are wetlands on this property. And I'm shocked because it looks like they're in the middle of a parking lot. Are those, are we requiring those? Well, first of all, is that true? And secondly, I didn't see any conditions that we were imposing that those parking lot wetlands be maintained.
So, there are wetlands that actually come right up to the west wall of the building. They kind of curve around on the west side of it. And there was one.
I'm thinking to the south of the building, the central part of the lot.
So there are, there are wetlands that are directly south of the building, south of where the new parking space is gonna go, that encroach all the way to, to where the driveway is located. Those are the, are part of the wetlands that the conditions of approval will cover so that they don't impact those.
And are those wetlands indeed in the middle of a former parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Go ahead, Kristen.
I was just gonna say that, yeah. Our local coastal program identifies what's called a one-parameter wetland. So if there is one, one characteristic of a wetland, then it has to be deemed a wetland.
But, but, but they're not buying the entire thing with all the wetlands, right, Kristen? They're just buying the area right around that building, essentially, and, and some of the parking lot. Is that right?
I believe that they, they bought the larger parcel that surrounds this parcel also.
Okay, but we're just passing the thing, our thing just deals. Okay, but we're just passing the thing, our thing just deals with their, the part around the building.
Correct. Just the smaller parcel right in the middle.
Right in the middle, okay, all right. So we're just dealing with that, okay?
Correct.
And also, the report said there's only one animal, red-legged frog, that is special in that particular wetland?
I believe, yes, that was in the report. And again, those conditions of approval that were placed on the project should avoid any impacts to any red-legged frogs or any friends that that frog happens to bring home.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, so.
I'd like to point out at this time, though, so far in the meeting, two of the suggestions you've made for staff, they've answered you incorrect. So that's two tonight. Go ahead.
I'm not sure, not sure what you're talking about there, Rich.
Everyone else is.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? So let's open up a public hearing. Kristen, do we have anyone that has signed up to speak on this item?
We had no one sign up to speak.
Not even the applicant?
Not even the applicant. Oh, I believe they're on the call with us.
And they speak to us from the call?
Hi, guys. Can you hear me? My name is Jacqueline Dixon. I'm part of the ownership.
Hey, Jacqueline, thanks for joining us. Would you like to share any thoughts with us about this project?
I was totally unprepared to have to do that, but
Well, you don't have to.
Yeah, I mean, basically, our sentiments are we're excited for the opportunity to try to improve this building and the overall look. It's obviously a very highly visible building in regards to coming in and out of Eureka, so you know, we've owned the property for a little over two years now, and it's definitely a property that has a lot of potential pitfalls. It's been a project and a really awesome learning lesson for us. We've lived up in the area for about 15 years, and this is kind of our first dallée into commercial real estate. And picking this property in the Coastal Commission has been interesting. But we still are incredibly excited to try to help improve the overall aesthetic of that area of Eureka and help make it a little bit safer and cleaner as well.
Well, thanks for the application and for joining us and for sharing on the fly there. So you did note earlier that B-U-H-N-E is pronounced Booner, correct?
Yeah, I heard something about that.
That's how you, that's how you sound like a local here. All right, thanks, Jacqueline, for joining us. Anyone else that wants to speak to this item? So we'll close the public hearing, return the item back to the Commission for a motion and discussion and a vote.
Well, there's no questions. I move the Planning Commission adopt two resolutions to conditionally approve the use permit and coastal development permit to allow repair and maintenance to the existing building and operation of a volatile cannabis manufacturing facility at 4640 Broadway.
It is a motion. Any second?
I second, Rich Ames.
Rich Ames, second. Discussion. Yeah, any discussions from anyone? I, Kristen, I have, I want to explore this this wetlands delineation a little more. It seems silly to me that we could have a parking lot that is not maintained, that you know, one condition of wetlands appears, a frog moves in, or a plant starts growing, and all of a sudden, it's not available for development anymore. Could you explain the code that we have that requires that and kind of where that is in the code one more time for me?
It actually comes from the California Coastal Act and from our local coastal program. It demonstrates the reason why folks who own property in the coastal zone, that it's really important for them to maintain their property. I know that the current applicants purchased the property with the ESHA and wetland already kind of invading into the property. So it was previous owners who maybe didn't do as much maintenance on the site as they should have or could have. And yeah, it is really unfortunate that, you know, with one parameter wetlands are wetlands.
And so even if we changed our local coastal program, it would still be required by the California Coastal Act. We would be accomplishing nothing, correct?
It's highly unlikely that the Coastal Commission would certify a new local coastal program that didn't have that definition in it, since it's a coastal act also.
Right. Okay, any other questions or thoughts about the motion that's before us? So if you're concerned about one parameter wetland, your options are, one, get out there and fix it before any official, any official notices, or number two, go before the coastal, go before the legislature and have them change the coastal act. Did I get that right, Kristen?
I would agree with the second part of that, yeah.
You don't have to address the first. All right. Any other thoughts, comments? All those in favor of the motion as moved, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, four to nothing. That item is approved also.
Thank you, everybody.
Next item on our agenda is business, old and new. We have none. Next item is reports and communications. So director or staff, anyone that has any reports for us, what you got?
So I will report to you another interesting Coastal Commission issue that we discovered last week, although it's actually based on an executive order from Governor Newsom. So when the governor declared the emergency for the pandemic, he issued some executive orders that did various different things. Specifically, he issued an executive order that told or paused some timelines and deadlines pertaining to the Coastal Act. So what that means is that any coastal development permits that are acted upon by the city at this point in time, the the appeal period to the Coastal Commission itself is delayed. So any projects that were approved between April 16th and June 16th, which is the 60 days of the tolling period, the appeal period won't begin until June 16th.
That would be actions that have been passed, are passed, but the appeal period is extended so that anyone in the community that wants to appeal those actions has an extended time to appeal them.
Correct. So if somebody wants to appeal your action on SD Management CDP this evening, they actually have 10 calendar days to do that to the city. And then if nobody appeals to the city during that 10-day appeal period, normally, right afterwards, there's a 10-working-day appeal period at the Coastal Commission level. That appeal period is the one that is told, and it won't actually begin until June 16th.
So Jessica, you heard that, I'm sure. We'll reach out to her, Kristen, and let her know that.
I've notified SD Management, both the consultant and the applicant.
All right, any other reports and communications for us? How are y'all holding up up there in the planning department?
We're doing pretty good. Everything's still moving. We have folks kind of in a more of a distributed pattern. So usually, one planner a day at least is in the building and everyone else is out and about in the world. And so that's been working out pretty okay for us. We're lucky in that this crew is really easy to move into a remote sort of fashion.
Excellent. All right, any other directors' reports, communications from staff to us? Anything that the council would like to ask or communicate to staff? So the next item is adjournment. I can smell dinner. Any objections to adjournment?
Yeah, good news.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate all your hard work and all this kind of weird environment. Appreciate it. Thank you. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.
Good, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Have a good evening.